Okay.
Sure.
Let's pray.
Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day and for the beauty of it. God, we pray as we go about the business for the city that you'll help us to make wise decisions and, Lord, honor you in everything that we do. We ask you in Jesus' name.
Amen. Mr. Williams, your last words?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we go ahead and call our meetings to order. Starboard. Our attendance. Mr. Cottle?
Here.
Jeff Upton?
Here.
Jan Brogdon?
Here.
John Collins?
Here.
Kara Hungate?
Here.
John Rollins?
Here.
Joe Cowan?
Here.
Dana McKnight?
Here.
City Attorney and City Clerk both present. So the first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I need to make two changes to that. One is to add some time for Paulette and the judge?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. To discuss a position for the court clerk. They have a proposal they'd like to make to the council. So I'd like to put that as the first item of new business. The next item is, we did receive a bid on our sewer project and we would like to get that before the council tonight, get that approved, or at least discussed. We can add that to the last item under new business, if you guys are so inclined. Do you motion? Yes, sir. Motion, ma'am.
I second.
We have a motion and second to add those changes to the agenda and adopt it. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from August 13th, 2019. Do we need to make any changes to those? Jan can't read hers, her dog ate it.
I read it first, but...
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I second. We have a motion and second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. That motion carries. So the next item is our public forum, in which we encourage anyone to come and address the council with any questions or concerns that you may have. We may limit you to two minutes per speaker if we start running short on time. Is there anyone that would like to address the council tonight? No? All right, we'll close the public forum and move into our business reports. Up first is planning commission, Walter Harnish.
Evening. So we're moving along. This month, we have lots of lit application coming up for us, but other than that, we made a lot of progress last month, I thought, on our new applications and where edits were made. Our wonderful secretary, Elizabeth Hale, did a great job with them. And we should hopefully be able to approve them with this next coming meeting. And then with the map, we should be able to move right along. Yeah, and if there's any questions?
Any questions for Walter? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is our library director, Shannon Reed.
We are transitioning from our old building to the connecting new building most likely next week if everything goes as planned, so that's really our big news. We've got the setup ready, so we're just eager to start moving everything and getting it where it needs to be. Our pre-K storytime is off to a great start. We have Barbara and Shirley working with the kids and they're also planning possible outreach with local daycares. We are starting to think about future programming for 2020, possible homeschool, and working more with the schools so far. Everything we've done, even at the high school promoting our online reading, has turned out to be successful, so we just want to keep that up. And we're also, we have a patron support fundraiser, so in our library, we are collecting monetary donations from our community to go towards interior items. We started that fundraiser. We've raised so far about $400. And that's just going to be put to our interior items as we complete the exterior, looking at shelving, furniture, all types of things for the interior.
How much do you need for the interior?
Well...
Just a rough estimate, people need to know how much money you need.
Yeah, truly shelves, children's, if we were to get everything, I mean, a lot of our things, even through the move and before that, are just really banged up. So shelving's 15,000, children's could be 7,000 for new shelves, so I mean, that could total, a dream number would probably be 40,000. But, you know, we're taking our items that we currently have in the library and seeing that if we can dress them up and stain them and cut them to where we need to be, we're just doing the best we can. But that's a great question, yeah. Forty to 50,000 would be a great number.
Any other questions for Shannon?
Well, I'd shut everybody up, didn't?
Yep.
And so, you know, that part of that is contingent upon what we get into when we start the remodel. There may be some money left over there.
Right.
But the more that the library can raise, the better.
Money left over after the remodel?
Right.
And we have a vision, and the vision works with what we have, you know, where we may open it up to donations at some point, and this will be an ongoing supporting fundraiser, so what we get, as we get things, we can purchase. And this could be a five-year, 10-year process, but we do, we'd love to make the library brand-new in the future, so.
Has everyone had a chance to go down and peek in the windows?
I haven't.
It looks great.
It does. It looks really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. What has really surprised me is if you look at those numbers at the library, the patrons coming in, that number is staying consistent, going up. Last month was the biggest month we've had this year. Items being checked out is staying consistent, so even with all the construction and noise, people are still visiting the library, so. Any other questions concerning the library? No? Okay, we don't have anyone to give a court report tonight. We don't have one in our packet. Next is Police Department, Chief Nelson.
All right, I think an important thing to point out, we had 379 calls, which is down. Last year was 429, so I think that's a good trend. We want to keep it moving down. We wrote 99 citations, 103 warnings, and had 113 warrants served. I was going to introduce some new officers tonight. We've hired two. One just called me and said he's running late, but he'll be here. He's caught in traffic. He comes from England Police Department, did a short time in Johnson. That is Brandon Williamson. His wife is a emergency nurse, emergency room nurse, and she's an emergency room nurse, and she got a good position up here, so they moved up here. We're excited to have him. The other one is Katie Griffin. I think most everybody knows her. She's entering her fourth week of the academy. She's doing well, and we'll keep on plugging on with that.
Is that England, Arkansas?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, England, Arkansas.
You don't have an accent.
You'll know when you talk to him. Does anybody have any questions? I'll have him stick around after. He's going to shake hands and get to know the business.
All right? Thanks, Chief. Isaac?
Where you want to start?
At the beginning.
Just dive in.
Well, start with sidewalks first. Our sidewalk project that was bidding out on Robinson, our loan bid was about $100,000 over budget, so we are rebidding that. We will open those on the first of October. So if these and Nick want to go, our sewer project may start before our sidewalk project, so. I did get the feedback from our sanitary survey that happened right, well, the day of our last council. They deemed us on the Kelly Street tank vent and the downspout, but that was nothing but good things to say in their report about what we had done, so I was happy with that. There are several things on our agenda tonight with sewer. We did open bids on our sewer main in Fayetteville and got a pretty good bid, so lowered Nick's blood pressure a little bit, and hopefully we can award that this evening. We have talked to Will Nguyen with EnviroTech or Environmental Tech. He has sent a proposal, and I'm not sure if Christie put that in your packet. He is going to be our operator of record, so to speak, so he will be, we will consult him. He's not going to be, and from talking to him and Nick can verify this, he's not going to be really hands-on. He's going to kind of let things go the way they are, but he's going to be there for consulting and to help us. And we really feel like the pond getting cleaned out is going to ease everybody a little bit, so.
Have we heard any more on the start date for that?
The start date is the 15th. I'm not sure...
That's the first to proceed. They may, I talked to Gary Emery yesterday. He said they're hoping to get out a little early. They're wrapping up a job down in South Texas. If the weather keeps holding out down there, they'll get done and then maybe they'll get started a little earlier. They were planning on coming around the first of October, but they'll officially be on the clock as of this weekend.
Yeah.
We're giving them 60 days, but it won't take them, but probably two weeks.
I think they said 20 days. 20 days is...
Maximum.
Yeah.
It won't take them long once they get going, so we just got to get them here.
And we're ready for them. We've got the pumps in place to bypass, and just soon as they get here, we'll be ready to bypass and thing gets started, so. Other than that, that's been the sewer. Got any questions for me? I know you do.
I don't really. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring to light. So we are cleaning out our pond. That is something that when we decommission the plant, we'll have some extra work there as well. But we're hoping that that is going to help us with our sampling, so we've been running a little bit high this, what, past month?
Especially in the summer months, we typically run high, especially...
So we're cleaning that pond out to get the solids out of it, and the expectation is that's going to help us with our sampling. This is something that's going to have to be done anyway. We're trying to be diligent in spending money down at the plant that is closing, right? But this is one of those things we'll have to do anyway, and it's going to help us in the next year while we're tying in the Fayetteville, so. I wanted to bring that up. And then also, if you guys noticed in your income statement for the water and wastewater fund, the sewer sales, so we've had our first round of increases. And I went back trying to find a month that was similar to last month. I found it in 2017, but with similar water sales, our sewer income was about $21,000. So this past month, it was 27,000. So that's part of what we're seeing with the increase in fees that we've had, about $6,000 a month. And of course, that is going to be going to Fayetteville and to that bond service once that all gets put in place. Any other questions for us? Thank you, sir. Park Director Harrison? I will just wait till we get our business report.
I wasn't ready. See, I was trying to...
I know.
I don't have a lot that's not in your minutes as they're in the packet. Both our fall ball program, as well as our flag program, has started as of, well, we started fall ball last night. Have games down there going on right now as well, and our flag started tonight as well. So both those programs are underway, so far off to a good start. My new employee started last week, and he's working out really well. I think it's going to be a big help to myself and the department, having him on board. And then the only other thing I want to let y'all know, I brought this up in the past, but there's a Boy Scout that is working on his Eagle project, and he's finally got all the approvals and everything, and is going to do the work this weekend. He's going to be doing some much-needed repairs and some upgrades to our, all three of our pavilions at Riverside Park, replacing some of the boards that need replacing. Also, he's got some donations to take care of some electrical work and stuff, so it's been something that's been, works for a while, but he's finally got all his stuff, so he'll be working on those hopefully this weekend as the plan. He's on a time crunch because he's got to get it done before his 18th birthday, and it's coming up pretty fast, so. So, but other than that, I don't have, just chugging along here. Things been going pretty well.
Do what?
Are you going to oversee that?
No.
No?
No.
Just the scout leader?
Yes. He's got lots of chiefs down there.
Oh, yeah.
It's a, it's, they kind of come in and get together. There's, I think he's expecting about 25 people down there actually helping him, so. A lot of adults and licensed electrician and all is going to oversee and do all the electrical upgrades and stuff as well, so.
That's good.
Yeah, it's a good deal.
They did get it approved.
And they got, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And they've got, I mean, he's worked hard and he's got some of the materials donated. The Parks Department's going to buy some, some of the materials, but he's gone out and got some donations, and that is part of what he was supposed to do with his project, so. Excited about that.
Big then?
Yeah, it'd be good for him as well. It's a good project for him, and it helps the parks and the city as well.
Awesome.
So Chad, in your minutes, you'd said that it looked like three of the six divisions were going to make for your...
Yeah, that's what I made. We had, we tried for six divisions, and we got enough teams to have three. Our 12 U boys and 10 U boys both made, and then our 10 U girls. So we're doing, we've got 10 teams involved.
Okay.
10 teams total, three divisions. So we're doing them on Monday and Tuesday nights.
I was just noting, dues, I mean, it's almost the same amount of dues as what we took in for spring ball.
Yes, and we do it by team.
So it's a pretty good turnout?
And that's flag dues as well, if you're looking at fall program dues, so flags in that as well. I do have the numbers separated out. I can't give you that to see where we're at, but, yeah, that includes the flag program as well, so. But, yeah, it's, so far, everybody seems to be excited to be, at least the ones that are there, excited to be back at the park this time of year, so.
Any other questions for Chad? Yes, ma'am.
Pitt actually brought it to my attention. You know the Old Highway 71? There's a big sign up there, and it says something about West Fork. I really, it's so blurred up, I can't see it. I didn't know if that was a city thing, a park thing, or if it's like the property owner? You talking about the one on...
Yeah.
On Mars? Yes, I didn't know if that could be a project.
And I know it's been brought up a few times, and I know the school, the East Program and a couple other have done research about restoring that sign and stuff as well, but I think it is on private property, so. But, yeah, it's, it would be a great project.
I don't know.
Someone looking, so. And I know there have been some organizations that check, I think, didn't you do some?
Yeah, an East...
Yeah, Isaac, at one point.
They don't sell on Mars. It sits on somebody else.
Yeah, it's the Wayne, Joyce Wayne, that's their property there. But I'm sure they'd be open to having that taken care of.
Yeah, I don't know why the other projects, when they check into installed or not, I wasn't too involved. I just knew they were happening, and some of the school organizations had looked at one time about restoring them, but...
So I feel like we want to show our tiger pride, you know, and get it up there, whatever it says, you know.
Has it been updated since 1968?
It doesn't look like it.
I think that's what it had.
It needs to be either updated or removed. Yes, exactly. Because it's not being taken care of, and that doesn't look like tiger pride. Exactly, that's what I think, yeah.
But maybe Police Chief could take care of it.
Now, start up somewhere. Pass that on.
Any other questions, Chad? Anyone else?
Sorry, Chad.
All right.
Thanks, Chad. Chief Myers?
Not much. Spoke last month about finding some software to keep our reports. I think we found some. We just got to find a spot in the budget where I can afford to get it. Like to get it now, get the bugs worked out before the first of the year, so maybe we start the new year off with some decent reporting. Download been on calls, 56, 10 less than last year, but it's a good thing. Westfest, thanks to John, Kerry, everybody else for letting us take part in that. Pancake Records worked out great. First year, we actually counted the number of people coming through. 431 people is what we counted, which is great. Caught talking to some other fire departments who do fundraisers, we're right there with them, and they've been doing it for years and years and years, so. Definitely want to thank everybody that showed up to help cook, do everything, definitely the people that showed up to eat. We had some, and I'm probably going to miss somebody, BNR donated sausage bacon, Sonic, got some cups from them. IHOP donated bacon, the school donated some fans, refrigerator space, which is definitely well-needed, chairs. We had several firemen that donated personally and bought items, and they know who they are, I know who they are, so I won't call anybody out, but thank you to those people that did all that. But definitely thanks to Westfest for letting us take part in that. Other than that, that's really all I've got.
Questions for Chief Myers? Thank you, sir. So Christie is on a cruise right now, so I guess we'll excuse her absence.
I think we should hold it against her.
Are there any questions concerning the financial report? Any of the budgets? So John, you want to give us a quick update on Westfest, and then we'll get back to Chief Nelson?
Went well. We had a lot of people there that didn't stay long, I guess because of the heat.
It was terrible.
But we did have a pretty good turnout. Before expenses, we raised right at $7,000.
Wow.
So that was a good year. Special thanks to the parks. You know, Chad and TJ helped us. Chief helped us. Isaac was around. But one of his employees, Danny Moore, goes above and beyond every year. He takes vacation to help us, so big shout-out to Danny. And now, without his permission, he is part of us, we put him on our committee. He wasn't in the committee, so we voted him in. But, you know, all the help, and afterwards, people helping us clean up, I mean, this is quick as, we cleaned up since we started in Fayetteville, but it was hot. I don't remember seeing you there.
Hot.
But there was a lot, we did have quite a bit of people show up that just didn't stay long.
It was the biggest crowd ever.
It was hot, very hot, all week. But, and thank everybody that pitched in and helped.
We appreciate it.
Couldn't do it without, so.
Thanks, sir.
Big thanks to the city and the parks and the fire for helping.
Yeah.
All right, Chief.
This is Brandon Williamson. I gave you guys the skill earlier. He'll be with us now. I would have had the other officer come, but since she's in the academy, I think a day of that's about enough. And I fit, most of you guys know her anyway. She's been here forever.
She was born here.
Yeah, yeah.
Born and raised here.
Did you give him a sentence to say where everybody guessed where he came from?
Where'd you come from? What police department down south? Down south. Yeah, I come from England, Arkansas, worked there for a year. Part-time at Sheridan, originally from Sheridan. Is it your dad's family? Yeah, my father is the Assistant Chief of Police at Sheridan. I've worked Hot Springs County Sheriff's Office and Melbourne, other different departments. I told him when I hired him, Riley's my quarter horse. He wants to chase everybody. He says he doesn't want to chase anybody, so he's going to have to be my steer racer. Did that in high school, too. So if any of you guys have any questions you want to talk to him, he's around. He'll be around when you want to.
Welcome.
Welcome forward, sir. All right, that concludes our business reports. We'll move into new business. Judge, we put you at the first item of new business. So Judge Jones? Paulette are going to give us a proposal on our new court clerk.
Y'all remember her?
Yeah, yeah. Told you I'd be back.
It's all her, well, the reason I'm here is all her fault, really. When she left, or before she left, she came to me and she said she had an idea. And the idea was to share, y'all might not be familiar. If you are, forgive me for explaining things that you already understand. The head clerk, the way the municipal league has manipulated, is that the head clerk is the only employee of the judge. The deputy clerks work for the city, therefore the mayor. And so she was leaving, and there's a reason why we haven't replaced her, because it was her fault. Her idea was, hey, I think a lot of the impetus for this is, since we have not had a courtroom for so long, the city of Greenland has done what I've always found Greenland, it has been a really great neighborhood. And they said, we thought about holding it, because I hold court, just a little background, I hold court in West Fork, Greenland, I'm in Elkins, I'm at the jail during the felony things, and I am Fayetteville. And so Greenland is one of my courts, and I've always found it to be a delight to go there once a month. And so when the court was going to close down with all the construction, we're either going to have it in Fayetteville, but it made more sense to have it in Greenland because it really is part of South Washington County. Fayetteville's different. It just is. And when I approached the mayor of Greenland and asked what we got, they're like, yeah, no problem, even though that everybody has to move out for a couple of hours. I mean, they're just amazingly nice about this. It doesn't hurt that I used to represent Bill Groom back when he had Ozark Mountain Sports. None of you are old enough to remember that old story. So I have some dirt, I have some dirt on Bill, which helped. And so going back and, and often, when we've had a shortfall of personnel in West Fork, even before we were sharing courts, a championship should come down and help us, and then vice versa. And I know I'm ramming, but I got to stop to tell you something. I go out to Elkins the other day, and I've had, both my clerks who are, that I inherited from a prior judge, quit and left no instructions on how they ran their, it was an absolute nightmare. And we had to hire two really brave young women to take over that, and they had no idea what they were doing, and it's been overwhelming to them. I go out there, and I wasn't supposed to be out there, apparently, and, because I thought, I went out there last Tuesday, and I hear this voice behind me, this woman was out there helping those clerks for nothing. Something about what kind of person this is. Anyhow, so when Paulette, she said, hey, I got an idea, and you should listen to someone that does those types of things. And she said, I think that you should, Greenland and West Fork should share the chief clerk. And she had it figured out. She sat down with a piece of paper, and she said, if you do this, it will be a money saver. Listen, I don't involve myself in numbers. I don't think a judge should involve himself in numbers, and plus, I believe anything she tells me. And so, oh, okay, if you say so, you really think this is a good idea? Yeah, I think it's a good idea. So, all right. And so I met first with Mayor Paul, and he said, and I explained it to him, nowhere closer or articulate as she can, and he listened to me, and, you know, being a numbers guy, said, yeah, that kind of makes sense. I have some questions and kind of worried about how it worked, but it makes sense. And then I went to Mayor Groom, and he has to do whatever I tell him, so he said he was on it as well. As you might not know, the chief clerk is paid, half of it's paid by the county, and then the rest of it's picked up by the city. And so the idea is, I sit in West Fork four times a month, and I sit in Greenland one time a month. The idea is that the chief clerk would be based in West Fork. We have the ability, because I can pay for it out of funds that I have, the court automation funds, to set up a direct, a computer link to Greenland. And that clerk would be here in West Fork, the phone lines would come to West Fork, and the Greenland phone lines would come to West Fork. She would travel with me to Greenland on those one court day. And then, what this also does is mean that one of our... And, um, then, what this also does is mean that one of our part-time clerks here, Mary Norman, because she's, she actually gave both mayors and I a great idea, uh, the other day in the meeting, um, she would resign from here, and she would go full, Greenland's willing to pay her a full-time job to, uh, be there to answer phones and just take care of people walking in off the streets. It's, it's different, there's a few other places in the state that have done that. This is an innovative idea. Uh, after I talked to both mayors, I can't, I can't say enough about how much time both of them gave me, the number of times that they came and did their job as mayors to talk to us about, the three of us would sit, and the two of them working, they've been more than great about this. And all the, you know, looking at all the different details, the bottom line is, it will be more efficient, it will, uh, save you money, and not in the end, it will save you money, it will save you money right away. And, uh, both courts use the same, it's called BJ, virtual justice, uh, they use the same database. And there's all this sharing going on with Greenland and West Fork right now. I think there's no other two cities in Washington County, I can't think of any other two cities in the state that have been as gracious to each other as the two of you. I know Greenland's done some things about easements and the rest of it, uh, they've been great about that. Um, it, it makes sense to do this. The pay would be more than she's making because, that she made. Part of that, like, the main reason for that is she was woefully underpaid all of these years. Woefully. That's mainly my fault. I should've come in and pitched for them, that's me a cult. Um, but, pay would be more for that person because they would be doing both courts. But again, half of it's paid by the county. Greenland is enthusiastic about this, even though it's gonna cost them in the end more money than West Fork. West Fork will save money, Greenland will spend more money. That's the weird thing about that. But they're, they're happy to do it because it's, I don't know why. Maybe I really do have dirt on Bill, I don't know, but he seemed to be anxious to do it. Um, and they're happy, you know, obviously, it's Tammy that I'm thinking about, they want to keep her in, you know, this, having something to do with the city of Greenland, because she's done such a good job. It's a good idea. It's such a good idea that I'm afraid that y'all will dismiss it, because you'll say, there's, there's gotta be something hidden here. There's really not. It's a good idea to have this person. Uh, she'll be, she's my employee, be it in Greenland or in West Fork. My chief, my chief clerk in Elkins is my employee, chief clerk in Fayetteville, blah, 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 blah. Um, right now, it, you know, when things are done well, we take it for granted. You know? If the trash is picked up, the police come out to your house within six minutes, the fire department, the West Fork Fire Department gets here so fast, we take it for granted. When it doesn't work, holy cow, do you notice it. And folks in Elkins, I noticed it. I had two people leave, and, uh, it has been an absolute disaster. No fault of these two women that I've hired, they've had to come into a, an incredibly complicated system. Uh, for every fine that is paid, so much of it has to go to, uh, State Police, so much of it has to go to this fund, I can't even tell you the funds, she can. Uh, game and fish, the rest of it. These, it's an absolute nightmare, for someone to walk into that job and not know what they're doing, um, the city comes to a halt, and in fact, Elkins did. I had the mayor there call me up, said, we are just not getting these reports that we're supposed to get. Again, I think the women were just over, um, they were overwhelmed. I had to go out, I mean, I've never called to the mayor's office in West Fork, even when her leaving, because she's trained, done such a good job of training these two women. I never called to the office of Greenland or Fayetteville, because these clerks know what they're doing. It, they are, people don't realize how hard and how complicated that job is, the certifications that are needed for those jobs. And we have, uh, right now, in West Fork and in Greenland, uh, four women that are as good of clerks as you're gonna find anywhere in the state. Absolutely. Most of that I think is due to this person right here to tell you the truth. Yeah. Well, you trained him. Anyhow, that's the idea. I think the mayor thinks it's a good idea. I think, uh, Mayor Groom thinks it's a good idea, more, uh, I think all the, we, we had a meeting last week where I said, let's get the women in here and ask them what they think. They came up with a good idea about something to do with vacation time that we hadn't thought of, that was, we were just, oh, wow, that's brilliant. Um, it's a good idea, and it needs to be done. This is not about combining these two cities, but it's about two cities combining resources to make it more efficient, much like you have done with the police force. I think that was, might've been your idea, John, wasn't it?
I think it was a little bit before me, it just happened.
But you made it happen?
Yes.
Yeah. That was so simple, right? And suddenly, boom.
It was easy.
Yeah, and it worked. Uh, when I swear in a new, when I swear in this young man, have I sworn a bit yet?
No.
Judge Nation's in the nation.
Really? Graham Nation? It didn't work. You can't be calm.
It's Graham.
Where was I?
You were wrong that day. It was the last.
Really? Everything that, every ticket that this guy has given is invalid. Graham's not that funny. Uh, it's a great judge. Um, but it's worked. Uh, I swear in, when I swear a police, a new police officer in Greenland and a new police officer in West Fork, I always swear in for both cities. That's what we're asking here. It is a money saver. Now, don't start peppering me questions about money and numbers, because, you know, I don't know how to count. She does, that guy does, and some other folks, if you have questions about how it would be a money saver. But, um, and this is overdue, and I apologize for a little bit, it's overdue. The court's been ignored, the personnel's been ignored, they've been passed over for raises, 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 back in the dark days of West Fork, and it's been really unfair to these folks who've done an incredible job. Um, no one likes, or a lot of people think, well, why do we even have courts and the rest of it? Because this is the United States of America, and we have to have courts, right? That's how it works. And that's what makes the courts work, our people succeed. All right, questions, or do you want to say something?
I think you covered it. The only thing I would say, you know, I was gonna mention was, when looking at wages, there were, the chief court clerk at Farmington had five years' experience.
I admire that, you know, being a male guy here.
Okay.
If you want to know what it's like to have a bad clerk?
Oh, yeah.
Farmington. What happened when they didn't have a decent clerk? Do you know? You know the number?
For twenty years.
Yeah. How much money did that clerk steal? Over two million dollars, and from what Judge Nation, see, by the way, she's not ever someone to blame. It, it's well north of that amount. Integrity counts in these jobs. Uh, so that's another thing to think about, that has the quality of these meetings.
But in, in setting the amount for the person to make, my pitch I was gonna make to you is this, Tammy has nineteen years' experience. The clerk they just hired at Farmington had five years' experience, she was out of the court business for about four years, got hired at Farmington at forty-two thousand. They're in, that city about the same size as us, they don't do quite the amount that we do in the court. Uh, P Ridge is another town about our size, their clerk has been there thirty-five-plus years. Now, at one point, she was city clerk and court clerk, now she's just court clerk. She makes above sixty-five thousand a year. She has been there thirty-five-plus years. I was here thirty-two years, I was making forty-one thousand. Um, had my wages been adjusted, and that was, you know, we didn't get with the state and get that amount raised, had I been given the five percent raises that this mayor's famous for giving people, when I left, I would've, you, yeah, I mean, we used to get two percent, I mean, come on. Five percent is great to me. Had I received my raises over the last four years, like everybody else was getting, I, I received a raise, but it was a bonus every year, because I was stuck at forty-one thousand, so I got a bonus.
Can I explain why you were stuck?
State legislation.
Yeah.
I've got it right here. We fixed that, it's not there anymore. Um, anyway, had I received raises that accumulated, like everybody else's accumulated, when I left, I would've made, been making fifty-one thousand dollars. I was ten thousand dollars short. We went to the state legislature this year, I happen to know one of the judges that was on that committee this year, he was my judge, and the lady at P Ridge, uh, the chief clerk at P Ridge was also on the legislative committee. The Washington County District Court clerk salaries for Elkins, West Fork, and Prairie Grove were all adjusted. West Fork's amount was adjusted to sixty thousand dollars, that's the top-out rate now. Uh, Prairie Grove adjusted to fifty, fifty-one thousand, and, what was the other one I said? Elkins, Elkins, the other place, is adjusted to fifty thousand. So when those clerks reach, reach those amounts, they'll need to go back and address the judicial committee again to get those adjusted again, if they reach those top-out rates, which it should've been done with us, and we hadn't done it. But I do have that legislation here, if anybody wants to see, I brought a couple copies.
Hello, do you have Farmington's, what's their range?
Um... No, they're, they were city courts, so they don't fall into this, so it may, it may not be here.
They're a department of, of...
Of Farm, of Prairie Grove, so they may fall under that one.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. But this was based on the, the district courts that were in existence back in ninety, when did they create district courts?
Two thousand.
Ninety, two thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, at that time, they still had city courts, but they, they have a city of Lake Village.
It should be in there.
Yeah, it should be in here. Let me see, where's Conway? There's Dallas, I'm getting closer. No, they have Elkins, it goes from East Camden to Elkins to Franklin County, so Farmington's not on this.
Probably part of Prairie Grove.
That might be part of Prairie Grove. We, we can look into that for you, see if we can find out.
That's enough to pay them fifty-one, starting?
Yeah. Well, fifty-one top out.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm hoping that you'll look at those numbers and maybe fall somewhere in between those to get this clerk in.
And remember, you're not paying it, all of it.
Yeah, you're paying one quarter. The county will pay half of her salary, like they did mine. West Fork will pay one quarter of her salary, and then Greenland will pay one quarter of her salary. And if I'm not mistaken, is Greenland paying half her benefits?
That was, that was the, that was the proposal.
Proposal was half her insurance benefits.
No.
No?
No. Because they, because instead of a straight split in half, because she's only in Greenland for one day.
One day?
West Fork would pick up the benefit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. If my understanding is right.
I thought we were gonna split the benefits, but she's still doing the job.
I could be wrong.
I have some phones and everything for Greenland?
Yeah.
Well, court phones.
Court phones.
Only court.
Yeah, only court phones. Right now, she answers all the phones.
I tell you right now, I can't tell you how many times a day I answered the phone here in West Fork, and they really wanted Greenland. And same with her, people will call Greenland, and they really want West Fork. So this is gonna eliminate the aggravation of that, you guys have no idea, you're, you know, trying to explain to them, oh, you got the wrong court. But it says Washington County. Yeah, Washington County District Court, West Fork, Washington County District Court, Greenland, Washington County District Court, Elkin, Elkins. So, you know, we should just be the Southern Court of Washington County, but that's it, we're good. Everybody comes here. So this, that's gonna eliminate that. They didn't ask the clerks what to name these things when they named them, they talked to the judges, you know, it's just...
So I think, to get to the meat of what we're, what we're getting at here, a little bit of background, the state had previously capped, had a salary cap for court clerks at thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand, right. Thirty-eight...
So each year, the city of West Fork, the city council would vote to pay Paul Etta in excess of that, once, once she got to that point.
One time.
It was a one-time bonus, yes. But we would give her a bonus. Appreciate you, uh, letting the rest of the department heads know what your raise was one year, when they may not have all got that. Uh, maybe we were trying to take care of the court clerk.
Well, this year was only twelve thousand, twelve hundred, sorry, guys, twelve thousand.
But, uh, so we, we have consistently taken a vote with the city council to, to get above that state salary cap. West Fork's salary cap is at thirty-eight thousand. It mirrored the state's, and we have not, we have not changed that. That is something we've talked about, reviewing the salary caps, we've yet to do it. But with budgets coming up, now's the time to, to look at that salary cap. But the proposal that, that we had with Greenland was, we would bring Tammy in to West Fork as an employee. Uh, now with that, she loses some benefits, she loses some insurance, or not insurance, but...
Vacation.
Vacation.
Vacation, which she has accrued at Greenland. Uh, but the proposal was, we bring her in at forty-six thousand, we split that cost. I was under the understanding we split benefits with Greenland, but maybe not, we can clarify that.
Yeah, clarify.
But the county would pay half of the salary, half of Medicare FICA. West Fork would pay a quarter of salary, Medicare FICA, as well as the benefits, uh, the health insurance and the retirement, and Greenland would pay the other half, or the other quarter. So we're each paying a quarter, the county's paying a half, but the county doesn't pick up, uh, retirement and health insurance. Mary had suggested that, since Tammy would be losing all of her vacation, she would be starting with zero vacation. She, she had, hang on, just, just let me get it all out. She has vacation accrued at Greenland. Greenland said they would pay out her vacation to West Fork a, a week's worth, so that she would start with a week's vacation, but it would be paid by Greenland. It wouldn't be costing West Fork anything in the first year, since we don't offer vacation to a new employee. So the, the proposal was, she would work here four days a week, she would go to Greenland one day a week, uh, or one day a month, or one day a week for court?
Right now, one day a month.
No, one day a month.
One day a month for their court. Mary, who is a twenty-five to thirty, under thirty-hour employee for West Fork, she's wanting full-time, we don't have that in our budget to, to have three clerks at full-time. So she would be going to Greenland full-time, we would lose her as an employee, they would employ her full-time to do city work as well as court work. So she would answer the phones up there, just general day-to-day business, lock splits, that type of thing. She would become an employee of Greenland. So we would be losing that employee here. We would be getting Tammy, and we would be keeping Tracy, who we may have to add hours to...
And we would have to replace Mary.
Yeah. We need to replace Mary, because you need two and a half people, because you're picking up another court.
So...
We work with two and a half people, myself, Tracy, and Mary.
Yeah, we'd get another...
So you're getting Tammy and Tracy, so you need another person half-part-time.
So that's, that's an argument I'm willing to have, because right now, we're not doing forty hours a week between the two of them.
Well, but Tracy's thirty-two hours, and she's willing to stay there, because that gets her insurance paid.
Right. My point is, though, that between the two of them, neither of them are working forty hours a week currently, and there's just two.
And it's not all getting done, because I'm not there.
She's not, yeah, we, we get shorthanded.
I'm not there to steer it, so they've been shorthanded. I mean, they're keeping up.
We've been doing, we've been doing with two part-times, as opposed to a full-time and two part-times since she left.
So, you know...
Okay, but that's, that's another, we can, we can cross that bridge, but, so are there any, does everyone understand what the proposal is with Tammy working for both West Fork and Greenland? And are there any questions concerning that?
And then we pay her retirement. That comes from West Fork.
That does.
So her retirement...
Yeah, well, she was walking with, let's, let's just say that Greenland...
Well, she's got it, I might be half and half.
Yeah, let's say that Greenland and West Fork, or she didn't, she never came to me with this idea. I've gotta hire a chief clerk, and you're gonna be paying her retirement.
Right, I'm just asking, though, so we can have clarification.
Yeah, so it could be split easily, because she's already on a person, Greenland.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to figure out if, if, if they were gonna pay half of her, I thought they were, but maybe not.
I don't think so.
Trying to think of the last...
You think so?
We've ruled this thing...
We have, we've met several times over this, and, uh...[1731.12] Any other questions, council? While we have them here?
I think it's fairly straightforward. So the salaries, I understand, it's 11.5, our share, 11.5, the quarter?
A quarter would be roughly, I guess, or exactly that, you'd have benefits on top of that. I think our current half that we have budgeted is right around 20,000, is what we were paying with Paulette's salary.
Well, you'd have to like the FICA and insurance and everything else, make one ounce. So, the chief clerk costs would be shared. There's a deputy clerk or two here in.
Those, those costs aren't.
There's a person that's going to be hired at Greenland, who's going to be an employee of the city.
Of Greenland.
And they're going to do all kinds of stuff.
Mainly it's.
Also going to do court work.
Well, when I do, when we say they're doing court work, we're talking about answering the people that walk in off the street and say, I want to pay on my phone.
Right, that's what I mean too. She'll send them to us, and on days when they're having court there, even right now, we go down there to have court. Two people went to have court, one person would stay here. But since I'm not there, both of them are going to do court. And Tammy is sitting there, and she's been helping when people come out to set up time pays and that sort of thing, she helps get that set up, just to keep it, keep it moving. And Mary would help on those days, just to keep everything moving.
Greenland runs court right now, right? Let's say that we had a courthouse fixed.
Uh huh.
All right, so we were just back to the old way we did things, just picture us a year ago. Greenland had a court and they had how many people running it? One person?
Tammy.
That's it? No, and, and did she get help, do you know, from the other employee in the city hall?
Police officers, yeah. The officers are always in there and those guys are really good.
Not the city hall help or not?
No.
No, they, they had for a while, they had problems keeping them, or people have been able to keep up. Twice, because they're not my employees, only Tammy's my employee. We've had people in there try to help and they just.
Didn't work out? She handles it by herself?
Yeah, yeah, she's able to do it.
Able to? Okay. But she'll come here and be basically you, right? But she'll also.
Tammy worked here for 10 years.
Right.
So she was trained here, so we do things basically the same way.
And as far as on court day, of course she'll go up to Greenland, of course, like we're going now on West Fork.
Yeah, until our courtroom's done. And then we'll stay here, but they'll still go there on his day.
But on Greenland court day, she'll go up, right?
Yep.
That's what she'll do.
One day a month.
And the other two can go or stay, whatever you need, right?
Right.
They will, the other two will stay at West Fork.
Okay. So on, on that day, right, just that one day, you would be here, right?
Ordinarily.
You would go to Greenland.
Ordinarily.
But that's, that's going to be okay?
Mm-hmm.
With the two that you'll have?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, you say that, but I mean, you were, I know how busy you were.
Tracy's here.
Right, okay.
And Tracy is phenomenal. She is a multitaster extraordinaire.
Okay.
She gets it done.
All right. And then when she's back here, the daily stuff, that I want to pay, or I want to change my day, or discovery, all that, that she'll handle, the young woman who's going to go up there from here will handle all that, yes? Or will that get handled?
That'll be handled here.
You see where I'm getting, so Greenland stuff, the day-to-day stuff.
Greenland will be there for court.
Right.
On one day a month.
Okay.
The rest of the time, the day-to-day, if somebody comes in and wants to pay a Greenland ticket, they'll come here.
Okay, so, so the person, the new Paulette, she'll be here, of course, but then the other two will also take Greenland business during the month?
No.
No, just Tammy?
That's what she just said.
Tammy.
That's all, so, yeah.
I think it's going to overlap, because the computer systems are so.
Yeah, they, listen, they can, and here's the dirty little secret, without this agreement, it's been going on, without a doubt, mainly because all these women like each other and they respect each other. And so that's why, I mean, it's the culture that she's created, that's why they've gone up. When I have not had a clerk in West Fork, I've looked up and Tammy's been there. She's just been there, because she just asked her to be there. I mean, that's where this idea came from.
We just changed.
And it's been changed around. So these two women that are paid only by West Fork, will they end up taking Greenland court? I don't know, does she ever call, do you ever cover the water or answer the police phones? I don't know, but I suspect there's a little.
Well, I know, yeah, I know there's some of that too.
Yeah, so, and, and she's a court employee, she's not a case employee, so, I mean, there's, there's an incredible injustice in that basically the clerks have been doing the Washington County prosecutor's job when it comes to discovery. That's the tradition you and I grew up with. It makes no, all the little cities that you are attorney for, why does the clerks handle discovery? That's BS, and you know it and I know, but they do it.
I don't do it for city jobs.
I'll leave that to you, the judges to straighten out. But, because we don't want to, we don't want to interrupt the business that you guys are doing.
That's right.
So I guess that's what I'm getting at, is want to make sure that you're comfortable that the two here will, and of course the new you, who's in both places, but, and it would be great if you, if you found yourself in West Fork, you could pay your Greenland ticket. That'd be great, and vice versa, right? If you found yourself in Greenland, you could pay your West Fork ticket.
And since I've been gone, Tracy's already set up to take credit card payments at the window. I wouldn't do it.
So, so, but do you, are you comfortable that the two here, the two part-timers you have, and then the new Paulette, will be able to handle that Greenland traffic as well, the daily traffic, not just the court day?
Yeah.
But that daily traffic from Greenland as well as the daily traffic.
That docket, that docket is, and I could speak to some authority on this, because I'm familiar with the size of the dockets. That's not a problem.
Because I would think, once we mesh them, you won't want to unmesh them.
For sure.
You know, and so you're going to want to.
And, and the books will be kept separately?
Yep, everything has, the reports have.
Greenland will have, have their books, West Fork still has their book. Greenland money all goes back to Greenland.
Right.
Because they're paying half her salary, so we're not going to take anything out of that.
The monthly reports have to kick.
So that, that way you'll be able to track that traffic, you'll be able to track that, what's about to find those.
We'll make the auditor happy.
Here's, here's kind of a weird, and this is sort of a lawyer thing, kind of a strange thing. When we created state district courts, the thing that I was, you know, the foremost proponent and fought for for so many years, right now, state, all of these courts are equal, there's no more district, municipal courts, it used to be the municipal and city courts. Greenland was a city court, West Fork was a municipal court, well, even, but after that, it was basically municipal and city courts. City courts couldn't hear small claims cases, they couldn't hear civil cases, and if you got a ticket out on I-49, you couldn't hear the ticket in Greenland. Where could you hear those things? In West Fork, because they were a slightly higher court. Well, in 2000, that changed, in 2016, it changed for good in Washington County. You can, if you got a ticket on I-49, if, this is really strange, like, for instance, state trooper tickets, they don't hear them at Farmington, do they? No.
Or highway.
They can, they can hear them in Greenland, they can hear them in Lincoln, they can hear them in Elm Springs, right? But because of, this is how weird, how people are, because of the culture, the custom, state troopers never think about putting their tickets in those courts. And so Greenland is only dealing with tickets that happen within the city limits of the city of Greenland, but they're allowed to hear ticket, a state trooper ticket that was handed out in Sonora. But they don't, just like they can file civil cases if they wanted to in Elm Springs and Tawny Town, but they don't. Why? Because they never did. Because lawyers are lazy and they never looked at the law and said they could. Isn't that weird?
It's not the adjective, but I've heard it most confidently.
I can record it, so I'm not allowed to use it.
You're comfortable if they'll handle that traffic?
I'm sorry?
You're comfortable they'll handle that traffic?
Oh, yeah.
As it begins to mesh more and more?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it as a problem. I don't think, the volume's going to increase some, but how many cases do you hear on a Greenland court day?
Well, since it's once a month, it, it's like a sort of busy West Fork day.
Okay.
But it's, it's nothing.
We hold court in West Fork once a week.
Yeah, so it's.
And sometimes our docket will be six pages, so it's 180, 180 folks coming through on court day. And so Greenland might have that once a month.
Now, when we say 180 people, you understand that the failure to appear rate of district courts go anywhere between 60 to 90 percent.
Well, you can see that by the court report, how many FTAs are on there.
It's a huge, huge problem.
But the warrants picks that real fast.
Don't underestimate it.
And I brought Tracy's to handle, she's dated.
Let's continue this a little bit, back to the point that we all understand what's being proposed. Are we ready to talk about this, Mr. Mayor?
Do what?
Hey, Alex Barney? Do you understand it?
Yeah, any questions you have, go ahead.
I don't have, I think I, I think I understand you.
Okay. Anyone else, questions, concerns?
I'm making a motion to allow you to proceed with this in whatever fashion you think this fits.
Okay, we have a motion in second to allow the mayor to proceed with. Clerk chairing. Clerk chairing. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries.
I'd, I'd like to take an opportunity, thank you personally, Mayor, for all the work you put into this, I really do appreciate it, because you put a lot of work into it.
Thank you.
And this woman here, she was paid a lot.
All right. Next item of new business, ordinance 492, title 10, the water and sewer use.
So, Mayor.
Just coming together pretty quick here at the end of the day.
He's holding the, will you show all that, the actual regulations?
So, so Nick has went through our sewer use ordinance that we have and updated from the 70s. Nick did all that.
Are these passed out, Ken?
Yeah. So what we're trying to do is adopt the new sewer use ordinance, and with that, with us tying on to Fayetteville, we, we have to reference their sewer use ordinance, so that we abide by their pre-treatment rules and, and what, mainly what's included up here for you guys.
What we'll do, Mayor, is we'll attach that thing that they negotiated with Fayetteville to this, and since we don't, and then we'll post it, but this is just sort of an adoption ordinance. We've done this before and we're sort of adjusting our, our sewer use rules to make sure that as we send our, our wastewater to Fayetteville, we're complying with the regulations that they want as well. And that's all this is, so the ordinance is pretty vanilla, it just sort of adopts that. And, but we have to keep copies of that at all times, and we will, both ours and Bay Hills, here at the city hall. So you would entertain a motion to suspend the rule, Mayor?
Do we have a motion to suspend the rule?
You do.
Second.
And a second.
And that's our goal.
Okay.
I sure will, ordinance to adopt updated and amended sewer use regulations and for other purposes.
Okay, so we have a motion second to suspend the rules. Mr. Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throggorn?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Karen Hungate?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Joe Teller?
Yes.
Jamie Knight?
And so, Mayor, now that the rule's suspended, you would entertain a motion to do pass, unless there's any discussion about those regulations.
Is there any discussion before we move forward? We've talked about this in our contract with Fayetteville, we did this for something that was kind of.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second to approve it, are there any questions before we take the vote? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throggorn?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Karen Hungate?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Joe Teller?
Yes.
Jamie Knight? Okay. Next, approve a contract with Black Hills Energy for $36,999 to install a gas line for the new sewer relief station. Is there any questions about that?
I'll begin.
Make a motion.
We have a motion in second to approve that contract with Black Hills Energy, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. Next, approve a contract with Wind Environmental Tech LLC for one year at $1,525 a month. This is, is a level three?
Level four.
Level four, sorry, a level four sewage plant operator, something that the state would like us to have on staff for consultations, if we need to make changes to our sewer plant and the operation of it in the interim, between now and when we tie into Fayetteville. I was afraid that was going to be per week, so I felt really good about that price per month.
But now will there be maybe some months that he will not be contacted?
It's possible, yes.
That matters.
He will, he will be signing off every month.
Yeah.
So yes, he will be involved every month. Will he be hands-on every month? Maybe, maybe not.
So, so John, the, I will still be doing our discharge monitoring reports, our DMRs every month. He will, he will review those. In talking with him earlier this week, I told him that I would like him to be onsite at least one day a week while we are sampling, to at least observe our samples as they go and, and at least sign off on the chain of custody that goes to ADQ. So I, I really would like him to be here one day a week, at least.
And he agreed to that?
Yeah, yeah. We sample on Wednesday mornings, so, so that is kind of what we, and Nick and I are going to sit down and talk to him again. There are some tweaks that he, he is going to probably make there at our day-to-day operations. One being that we're probably going to, we're probably going to change testing groups. By now, we're, we're driving our, our samples all the way to Bentonville, and I'm not sure if they're getting sampled correctly, or ADQ is kind of breathing down my neck, wanting answers about why some of the samples are so, so funky looking, so I've already got a proposal from a company here in Fayetteville that is willing to come down and do the samples themselves, take the samples and then take them back, so, so just little things like that, that we can help limp us through this next 18 months until that thing is gone, is what we're looking for.
But they'll, they'll be coming and taking the samples themselves, you guys won't be taking them at all?
No, if, if we go with this new company, they, it's $10 for them to come down and take samples, so, yeah, that's a.
You pay that out of pocket once.
Yeah, I pay that once a week, easy, so.
So if we do this, the thing they signed you on the compliance, ADQ's compliance law was a class three card?
Yeah, we have a class three plant.
And through the connection.
Yeah, we got a class three plant and a class two operator, so that's one of the things they really.
That's the second part of the question, and I'm assuming where this guy's gone, or somebody that we trained up on class three.
Mr. Tedford is scheduled to go to a class the 7th through the 11th to be able to test for his class three. And, and in talking with Mr. Winn, it's, it's not, the pass rate on that test is not high, so I got my fingers crossed, but, but it, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. He, he's studying now, so he, he's taking it seriously, so I hope, I hope we can pull off a miracle. And then, and there is a, and Will said that'd be a, I'm sorry.
He's not talking about Donnie, he's talking about the test.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, there, and with talking with Mr. Nguyen, we can opt out of this thing, you know, and it agrees that way, so.
So, you're saying we're just in this for a year, and then we can opt out? Is that what you said?
Well.
Did I understand that right?
If we get a class-four operator, we can opt out.
Then we can, or a class-three operator. If we can move our class-two up to a class-three, then yes, we, we can opt out.
Cool.
And, and if we're not online in a year from, from now, then, which will be a stretch, we may be back here, you know, getting another six months or something, so.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion second to approve the contract with Wind Environmental Tech LLC. All those in favor, say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Uh, the next item is to correct contract price with Valley Water Solutions. We approved this last month. This is actually why Christie's not here, is because she made a mistake. If.
You're not here to get picked on.
Yeah. When she was looking at that contract that they'd sent us, it's in, it's in here somewhere, she took one of the numbers, but it wasn't the total. So, they had two numbers listed. She thought bottom number was the total, it wasn't the total, so. That, that project is actually two hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred nine two thirty-five seven, and that is for cleaning out that ethyl pond. So, if there's not any questions, do we have a motion to correct that from last month?
I'll make it.
We have a motion in second to approve that contract. All those in favor, say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is Resolution 2019-08, approve and authorize mayor and city clerks to sign the updated CAO with ADQ. CAO, I ask, that stands for? Consent Administrative Orders, yes.
Better leave all reviewed to their package.
Yes, we've, we've actually approved it once, so.
They're gonna keep changing it, I think.
They, they probably will. So, are there any questions concerning that?
Motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion in second to approve that. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Item six, we have two change orders. One is the library for painting. I've had a couple of questions about that. When the library was bid, there was some question as to which siding they were gonna use. One siding came pre-primed, I think was what it was, another one didn't. We took a package that we felt like would cost the city the least amount of money. However, with that, we went with the siding that needed to be primed. And so, basically, what we're doing is a change order for having to prime the siding. On the court, I believe that change order is on the steel, if I'm not mistaken. Isn't that what Zapp is? Joe?
I think so. I'm not sure.
Yes. And this is for padding those beams, and I'll be honest with you, the, the addition of those beams, we have been nickel and dime to death. Joe, with a catch from Christine, she called Joe on some engineering fees that they were trying to charge us on that. Joe had some explanations, we were able to cut some fees, but they were trying to charge us about, about four grand. So, that steel project down there has, has been a bad.
Well, Zapp is a demo contractor, and they did the removal and slab cuts and all the steel toppings.
And pulled out that chimney, I think.
Yeah, but I didn't, I didn't see any steel, but it's for the steel.
Yes. My point is, the addition of that steel, we have, we have poured money into this right there. But that's what those two change orders are.
Make a motion, we approve one.
I'll second.
The motion is second. All those in favor, say yes. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Hopefully, we're getting to a point where we shouldn't see many more change orders with the library and the courts, and so we have to kick in here really quick. Make that personal lost ground, lost time.
The steel is in, and they are, they are cutting the floor and putting plumbing in, so once that's done, framing will start again, so they're, they're, they're trying to get in time here.
Just to give you all an update on it real quick, the general contractor did come to us and said, hey, this project's been on hold, we're gonna be engaged longer than we anticipated, we're gonna charge you some more for that. We've told the contractor that it wasn't on hold due to us, and that was unacceptable, so we are still fighting that, but we feel comfortable that, or confident that we won't be paying any extra construction management fees for that, so. It's been a remodel, and it's, it feels like it's. The last item of new business is the bid for the sewer project. Nick, you wanna tell us about that? So, this didn't get in the package. We opened those bids on Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday afternoon. We got, we got six bidders total, which is a good turnout, a job that size. We had, at one point, I think, about fifteen plant holders. We had a lot of interest in it, very competitive bids. The low bidder was Boils Construction. They're out of Perrin, Arkansas, just, just outside of Little Rock. Let me look at their, got it on my phone here. Their total bid amount was six million one hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty cents. Now, that includes the, the upsides of the gravity line to Fayetteville, that Fayetteville's gonna cost share, and of that amount, Fayetteville's on the hook for two hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents. So, I've got City Fayetteville working on a letter of commitment, saying that they've got the funds. I've already talked to Tim Nine, their utilities director, and he's, he's very excited about the, the price they're gonna pay to, to make that upsize, so. They're gonna put forth a recommendation for Boils. We actually just finished up a project with them in Decatur. It was about a three-million-dollar project, four miles of sixteen-inch forest main, they did a very good job for us, very quick. Very minimal change orders, I think twelve thousand dollars on three million total in changes, which is pretty good. Same, same team, same crew's gonna be working on this one. They're very committed, they are very gung-ho, they're already sending me all the forms they need, they're asking me about bonding today, and we hadn't even gotten a, a formal recommendation from council, so they're, they're excited, and we're excited, too. But the pricing came in very good. The West Fork portion, because it's just under five-point-nine million, our estimate for the funding package about a year ago for this project was five-point-seven-five million. So, we didn't go through and do a full update when we bid it out, but just in a year's time, I mean, we're, it's very good, and we still, we're still looking at about a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar contingency in that funding package, so we're, we're very excited the way it came in, but hopefully we can get a recommendation to award to Boils Construction.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
So, we have a motion in second to award that bid to Boils Construction. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. I'm glad to have that on my back.
Your good business is often the result of the efforts of your staff and your engineers through that.
Absolutely.
So, thank you, Nick, for that.
Oh, well, thank y'all. This is, it's been a ride.
Within the next month, maybe we'll have some schedules out?
We should.
Maybe two months?
We should be getting a pre-construction meeting within, I'd say, three to four weeks with notes to proceed. I, I know they're ready to get started, they've been working in the area, you know, they've been up in this area, they're ready to move on to this. I could see notes to proceed early to mid-October, because they wanna get out, and they need to start clearing. And they've got a narrow window from November through March that they can, they can clear trees, because of some fish and wildlife regulations, so. We'll be hitting the ground running, and they're, they're excited to go, and we are, too.
So, that is one of the last steps in this very long process. We, we have already spoke with two new crews. So, I wanna publicize this in multiple stages as soon as this gets started. Getting the word out, one, to people with an environmental concern, that this is finally taking place. Two, this is opening up four miles of Highway seventy-one frontage between Greenland and West Fork, that is now gonna have sewer connections, water connections. That has the potential to be huge for West Fork. Until this point, there was really no need in, in publicizing, but now that we can see, we can see the, the light at the end of the tunnel, I want West Fork out there as much as we can, letting people know that this is coming to, to fruition. We're a year and a half out, and that gives people time to start planning on, on purchasing development possibilities, so. That is something that they've already been looking at, and that we'll be moving forward with as we get more information and schedules. Did you have anything else, Neil?
Thank you. I think it's a little library with withdrawal, withdrawal reports.
We did not have that. We need to make another change to our agenda before we close new business. I'm sorry, Shannon, I saw it in there, and I did not get it in the agenda change. So, in the back, the library has withdrawn some more items. Can we have the list of all of those? Yes.
I'm hearing my name whispered.
Do we have any discussion about withdrawing those items from the library?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve withdrawing those?
I'll make that. I'll second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Shannon. So, for Mayor's comments, I'm gonna start with, I don't know, I got several texts today with snapshots of Facebook that we were discharging raw sewage into the river. We are discharging into the river, the pictures that were taken, and the, the storm that was created on Facebook is at our discharge site. That water has been treated, that water has been tested, so if they're right, that is the second time this year that someone has posted that water's coming out from that area, but.
That's only been two.
Well, that, that was what one of the posts said, so I did, I get snapshot screenshots of what's going on, but the city did make a post. No one bothered to call the city, but they did take the Facebook, so. We did put out a post saying, hey, that is our ADQ-approved discharge site. Is the water pretty? Probably not, but. Was it? It is, it was a pad, it is treated water, it is what is normally discharged. And the last thing I have is, I don't know that Isaac mentioned it, but Jerry is, is retiring, so he had some, had quite a bit of sick time on vacation leave. He is officially not working for the city anymore. His last day is officially. September 30th. September 30th. We're trying to get Jerry to come to the council. We'd like to do something for him, so Jerry has worked for the city longer than anybody else ever worked for the city, even Paulette. So, Paulie's been here forty-three years, he's retired, I would like to do something for him. Jerry is a little bit stubborn, and doesn't want a big bill made about him.
Never does.
Yeah, so, anyway, we're still working on that. Isaac's talked to Anita, I think Chad's talked to Steve, so we're, we're going at the kids to try to get him here, and we'd like to do something, just to let y'all know that we do have that in place, but, but Jerry has retired. Isaac's still gonna go by and get him and haul him around up that sewer line, so that...
Steve still wants to be a part of the sewer project, so, so I told him I'd come by and get him when we drive in, when construction starts, so.
So, anyone sees Jerry, be sure and thank him for his service.
Yes.
That he gave the city of West Fork for all those years. He will be missed, so. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion in second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no.